I would ask that you take your seats and silence your phone will be started momentarily.
To what?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, they're actually going to work on putting the covering on it as soon as the river gets low enough, stays low enough.
I heard from my friend there. Did you hear from him?
Oh, yeah, they're going to work on that.
What are you telling me?
And that is part of the, because they have to prepare that before they put the pipelines in for the program. And so.
Ah, she's teaching us that.
No, we're working on it.
Yeah, that's. Councilman Jenkins is here for Chairman.
It's like 14, 15, 13, 14. For more than seven days, and I don't know how long it is now. So it'll be a minute.
For a man that creatures, that are. The regular city council meeting of Shreveport. City council is now called to order. Will you please stay in? We'll be late in prayer by Councilman Flory and Councilwoman Litch will give us the page.
Let us pray. Our kind gracious heavenly Father, we come to you, come before you this day, this afternoon. We ask that you pray, Lord, we pray for you, for the city, for the leaders and for the council, the mayor, all the administration, the workers. God, we pray for strength and wisdom and knowledge. We ask that you go now, God, we ask for your hand over our city and help us in this hour, God, that these things have caused families to hurt and for us to hurt, God. We ask down these things in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us face the flag and recite the pledge in unison.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, most members.
Just wanted to know if he was here. Go ahead and make sure that he.
You may call roll the president.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
President.
Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Litch.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Thank you, thank you for your attendance. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of our previous administrative conference as well as council move by Councilman Corbin and submitted by Councilman Flory in a discussion on the minutes. If not, please vote. Are we up?
I'm ready for Mr. Bradford.
Who are you waiting for?
Here. Okay.
Okay. Motion passes.
Six, one out of the chamber.
Six, one out of the chamber. Thank you. Members, we are now down to voice and recognition of distinguished guests and communications from, from council members. I have two that has been requested. We're going to start with Councilwoman Litch.
Good afternoon. I want to first acknowledge my successor on the Caddo Parish Commission, Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts.
Commissioner, good to see you, Mr. Watts.
And I'll be recognizing Mrs. Spurs later. But also another guest is Mr. Alan Dave Jr., who is here with us today, and I'm going to ask him to come, come up so we can all get a good look at him, good looking young man. Mr. Dave's company, Louisiana Cremation Service, Inc., a subsidiary of Lectum Incorporated, acquired Winfield Holding Corporation and Funeral Homes in February of this year. And as you all know, familiar with the Winfield Funeral Home brand, you know that this is a historic opportunity for, for them to acquire ownership of that corporation. And there is a huge, huge Winfield Funeral Home in my district, and we are so, you know, proud that you are now the owner, and we know that you'll continue the same level of service and commitment that, you know, prior ownership had. And I just want to hear a few words from you, and welcome to the community, welcome to District F, welcome to Shreveport, welcome to Louisiana, because I see that you, and I'll get this to everyone, his resume is, I don't think I've ever known of anybody that had the level of death care management education that he has. It's long and it's, it's very impressive, and so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Litch.
For choosing our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to have just a few moments of time. As for us, Winfield Funeral Home has been serving the Shreveport community for nearly 85 years. With the change of ownership, we want to let all of the community leaders and we want you all to know that we're here, we're going to be a part of the community, we're going to stay very much involved in the community. The community is very, very important, because when it comes down to funeral homes, it's a community-based business. But most of all, I'm a little bit different. I like to get involved with government, I like to get involved with the community and civic leaders. I like to take a look at what are the issues that's taking place within the communities that we have funeral homes in. So I'm not a person that's behind the doors that you can't get to, so I just want to, to learn more about the city of Shreveport and Louisiana, and see how can we be a helping hand and how can we partner with different things as we go into the future. Currently, you know, we serve over 1,000 families per year within the organization, but that's with death. But I think there's so much more we can do to help people that are living. And so the funeral home will be open for anyone, if you need those facilities, for any type of community activities that's involved. And, and I know tonight, Winfield Funeral Home will be hosting a Stop the Violence Rally that's going to take place at 6:30 PM, and we invite any of you all to come out and, and participate with those programs. We know that one thing, that there's too many children and young men that are dying unnecessary, and the order of life expectancy has, has been reversed. There are too many grandparents and parents burying children, and so what we would like to do is to begin today, trying to turn a little bit of it around by talking to our, our young men and women in the communities, and doing everything that we possibly can to give them some, a positive and a safe haven where they can speak their minds, and so that's going to take place on the day. But most important is really is that I like to get involved with your organizations at any level, and, and I want to be a part of the community, and not just someone here owning and operating a business, but be really a part of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dave, can I ask you a question, and, and welcome to the city. Winfield Holdings is, is a suburb outside of the Shreveport area also, isn't it? Well, Winfield Holdings has funeral homes in Shreveport, Baton Rouge, and Alexandria, Louisiana. Okay. And again, I appreciate, you know, your coming here today and expressing your desire to be a citizen in every area that's available. Yeah, I want to partner with you. We have, you know, 85 employees here in, in this community, and so it's very vital. So those are our employees, and they live within the communities, and everything that we can do to make their communities safer and better for them, that's what we're interested in doing. Thank you, sir. Thanks. Any other questions? Councilwoman. I'll just ask anybody this. Councilwoman, you finished?
I'll just say briefly, also, I did see the rally that Joel hosted tonight, you know, posted on social media, and I believe Chris Lynn Lytaker was one of the people who I, you know, saw commenting on it, and she's made a great, you know, impression on a lot of people with her, I think, to end the violence and to have some productive talks in the community, and I know there's a lot of people that have been meeting and gathering to talk about those kind of things. Appreciate you hosting that there.
Well, the young, the young people have been coming, and they just want to, they have a voice, they need a facility so that they can express their concerns, and so Winfield Funeral Home, we felt that, you know, a part of the community where these deaths are taking place, that we want to open our doors so that they can express their opinions. Thank you.
I hope it's a very big success. Appreciate you hosting that.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman, you finished with your resignation. Okay, now, at this time, we will have Councilman Everston with his guest.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, Chairman. I wanted to recognize today representatives from the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. This is the program that, you know, that we funded, we're in our second year, I believe, of, of providing city investment in this program, and so as they progress, I just wanted to see if we could get an update of what they were doing. We had received some information about their first year of operations, and just wanted to see if we could get an update of what's going on now. So if you don't mind, come on up and tell us a little bit about what's happening.
Thank you. I'm David Smith, I'm the Executive Director for the Entrepreneurial Acceleration Program, and as Jeff said, we're in our second year of actual operations. The last update that I sent you was in January, and in January, we reported to you that we had funded eight startup companies and that we had created 39 jobs. Today, as of today, I wanted to report that 11 startup companies, we're at 11, we're up to 11 companies that have received capital investment, and of that 11 companies, we're up to 54 jobs created in Shreveport and Caddo. And all 11 of those companies that are started, that we've worked with, are in Shreveport and Caddo Parish, because this is your investment, this is your Entrepreneurial Acceleration Program, the city and the Caddo Parish Commission are the primary stakeholders in this program. And I wanted to come and just let you know, give you some idea of how much success we're having in the program. Today, we've screened over 312 startup companies. I'll tell you about 150 of those startup companies that came and talked to us were not in Shreveport or Caddo Parish, and they said they would not move their business to Shreveport and Caddo, so we had to say, hey, look, we, we really can't help you with that. Of those, about 75 we have actively worked with that did do that, we have successfully relocated two companies. The mayor did a ribbon cutting for Cyber Reef Solutions for us here, that was a major victory for the city and the parish. They're up and running, they're national right now, and if you didn't know it, they are the secure provider for the Verizon network. So a lot of success right there. Our average payroll that comes back annually from those 54 jobs is about $2 million every year, and something we're really proud of is that we have successfully raised over $18 million in capital investment for those 11 startup companies. That's $18 million that came into Shreveport, Caddo, for those 11 startup companies. We do more than just for the startups, there's a lot of companies that come to us that aren't perfect for a capital investment, but we don't send them away, we work with them, we probably have right now in our pipeline about eight companies that probably won't go for a capital investment, but they're great for banks. And we help those startup companies or businesses that are currently here get ready to go to a bank, because one of our objectives is, we don't want them to go to a bank and ask for a loan before they're ready. So we've, we've helped them do that. We gave you a packet, a lot of the information that I'm talking about is in an information sheet that's there in front of you, and I'll close with the pie chart that's in there, because I want to, I want to just let you know what, what we're seeing in our community right now, in, in terms of the types of businesses and types of startups in, in Shreveport and Caddo Parish. About 24% of them are in the technology field, information technology, that includes mobile. We're right on par with the rest of the nation in, in the technology field. Services, about 10%, about 10% of the 312 we've seen are focused on services and being service providers. 17% are healthcare. That, that number's a little low for us in Northwest Louisiana. If you look at healthcare being the largest industry here, we would expect that number to be a little larger. We're working very hard with LSU Health Science Center, the other hospitals, as organizations have discoveries, intellectual property that they want to form businesses, we're working with them to get that number up a little bit. Media, the entertainment industry is included in that, not a lot, we're not seeing a lot of entertainment activity right now, but we do have one studio company that's doing very well, Swaybox Studios, they've been here to talk to you before. And then the other, about 32% of everything we see is what we categorize as the other, which includes food and transportation and oil and gas. That's my update for you. Like we said, we're in our, our second year of full operations, this is a five-year program, and there's been a lot of activity, and I think you'll see a lot of production from us in the, in the next three or four months before the end of the year.
Fantastic. Any questions? That's, that's my. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Councilman?
I'll just ask briefly, I know in this last budget cycle, we were not able to provide the same level of funding that we had in the previous years, and I was just curious what the impact of that may have been on the programming. Obviously, it was not an easy choice for any of us to make, but, you know, we have a lot of requirements and, and things we're trying to balance, and so it's just helpful to kind of know what, what impact that may have.
Yeah, the impact of that was, the year prior, we had five interns that we actually used in EAP and put in small businesses. This year, we were only able to do one intern. Prior to that, we had three local consultants that we used to help small businesses. We were not able to continue using their services. The bottom line on that, on that reduction in funding was, I would estimate that that's approximately 20 startups or small businesses in Shreveport and Caddo that we were probably not able to provide services for, because we were just, had too much, too much work to work on without that, without that.
And now, how many new startups were added this year? So I think you said, did you say 11?
We're at 11 total.
11 total.
We were, we reported to you in January, we had eight. So that's, so that's our workload so far this year.
The year over year, it sounds like, I mean, y'all are still, y'all are still getting a good number of.
We are definitely getting a good number of entrepreneurs. As more and more people in Shreveport and Caddo find out that there is an accelerator that's going to be with them and, and help them get to that major milestone, we're seeing a lot, a lot of interest.
So they, oh, sorry, Councilman. No, my, my only question was that, are you, the inquiries are coming to you, or you marketing yourselves?
We are marketing ourself and Shreveport and Caddo Parish.
Well, the numbers that you mentioned are impressive, and the return of our investment seem to be worthwhile, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
For what you're doing. And Councilman Jenkins, you may.
Okay, so, so the 54 jobs created, right, is where the 2 million comes from, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, I get over 2 million, but if I divide 2 million by 54, I get an idea of what that average salary is, right?
Yeah, the average salary that we're shooting for in the program is somewhere between 45 to about 65, because we're, these are, just about all of these companies have some intellectual property, they're very technical, a little higher paying opportunity.
No, no, and I just wanted to make sure I was doing the.
Right.
Conceptually, the math correctly.
Yes, sir. That is one of the metrics you hold us accountable to.
Yeah, no, I know that, so that's why I'm asking that. And then, my next question, do we, of those 54 jobs created, if a company relocates here, I, that one that I know moved here, that, do we count those as jobs created or no?
If they move their, well, they have to move their company here, their corporate headquarters here, and they have to have a minimum of 50% of the employees in Shreveport, Caddo.
No, no, I'm with you. So, I don't want to use analyzer, but that I know is one of them.
That's 100% here.
Okay, because they're 100% here, that one's very, very clear to me. But a company that moves here, and I'm trying to think of the name of.
You might be thinking about Cyber Reef Solutions.
Okay, Cyber Reef, okay. I don't know what they are, about 10 employees?
10 employees.
Okay.
Six are here in Caddo Parish, four are outside, and those are the four sales representatives in each of the Verizon regions.
Okay, so, and I'm just using this as an example, so this is not to be, you know, critical of Cyber Reef or even, just so that I understand this. Cyber Reef says, come into Shreveport, want to be part of the program, that's 10 jobs, does that count as 10 jobs created, or does that count as six jobs created, or does it, if those 10 employees all move here, is that zero jobs created? And I mean, all of them are good, I'm not debating, I just want to make sure how the numbers are counted.
Yeah, the way the number is counted, that's jobs here.
So.
In Caddo, Shreveport.
If six employees of Cyber Reef move to Shreveport, even though four sales guys that don't move to Shreveport, the six count as jobs created.
Six count as jobs.
Even though they weren't hired from.
Right.
Shreveport, Bush. Okay, good, good, good. No criticism.
Yeah, we're not double counting.
No, no, and I'm not, it's no criticism, I want to just make sure I can say the numbers if somebody asks me.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Smith. Thank you again, Mr. Smith, and thank you, Councilman, for lighting it.
I saw a good friend, I didn't say nothing at first, but I saw a good friend of mine out in the audience, and I just wanted to recognize Verdi, Verdi Evans, a good entrepreneur and good guy in the city, I just wanted to make sure I recognized. I don't know if he had a request to speak later, but I just wanted to recognize.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Okay, before we move on, I would like to take a few minutes, because I have a couple questions. Mayor, if you don't mind, Police Chief?
Yes, sir.
Can I speak with the Police Chief?
Yes, sir.
I want to do it now, and I may have some further questions later, but after what happened over the last couple of days, I, I was in one direction now, I may have to move my direction. Chief, how are you today?
I am good.
Chief, without getting into any details, and I have some questions, but maybe if you'd just give me some generics of where we are with what has happened over the last few days and weeks, maybe that could satisfy my question. Can you tell us anything about what's happened recently?
Absolutely, and I think we've spoken briefly earlier, and we, we talked about the kinds of violence that are occurring now, and just through our investigations, what we've learned is that the majority of them, not all, but the vast majority of them are people that are known to each other.
Okay.
And have some type of conflict that they're resolving with gun violence or violence in general, which is bad. And we have tried to get involved with the community to let them help us get these things resolved prior to them happening. And, and what happens is, and I think when we spoke briefly earlier, that, credit where credit is due, it came directly from you, that we spoke about some of the things that involve domestic violence. Really, you don't know about those things, what spouses do behind closed doors, you can't see that developing, or you may not know about it. But other incidences where we show up at the scene and something bad has happened and ended tragically, somebody always says, oh, I knew about that. That's so-and-so, they were into it, they've been into it for weeks. These are the kind of incidences that we want to encourage people to let us know about. And, and that's going to be the only way that we can get some of these things resolved, to get involved before they happen. But in order to do that, we need to know about them. We're investigating, as of last night, homicide on Lagardi Street, and early indications is that these individuals are known to each other as well, resolving conflict poorly. And it's amazing, and I don't want to go into the reasons behind, but it's all senseless, very tragic. In our efforts to become more involved in the community, we're having a, referred to as a party with a purpose, June 4th, 4725 Greenwood Road, in the parking lot of Praise Temple. Bishop Brandon has been courteous and kind enough to allow us to use his facilities there in the church as well, and it's going to be driven by our COP Bureau, our Community Oriented Policing Bureau will put that on, and we invite every neighborhood watch, every neighborhood association, every civic group, the general public at large, and everybody that's had, in the past, that had a Stop the Violence Rally, or some type of march, that want to get involved, we want to go ahead and push that envelope even further and get you to come to our particular party with a purpose, so we can all get together and find out what do we do after we do our marches. How do we create the avenue of information that's going to help us resolve these things before they get to the point of gun violence? Because if we know about these things, we'll literally get involved with those individuals and try to help them resolve that conflict prior to them pulling guns or knives or going to war with each other. And it's going to take the community to get involved and, and say enough. And I think that through all the things that are happening today, with all the people that are getting involved with the Stop the Violence movement here in Shreveport, that we're saying enough, but we're standing individually, we want to bring all those people together, and get all like-minded folk on the same page, and see what kind of results we can get when we all work together.
And thank you. That was one thing, again, I don't see a pattern of these incidences, other than people knowing each other and they.
They're not interconnected whatsoever, they're not gang-driven, they're just relationship-driven, with conflict resolution being poor. You know, we've looked at it through our intelligence, we've looked at it through our investigation, to see if any of these things are tied together, and they're not. I mean, some of these things you, you can't control when, when relatives are in a vehicle with a gun and something bad happens, or someone's in a home and get into it with a spouse one way or another, and something bad happens because of poor conflict resolution, somebody tragically is injured or dies. The things that we can control, we do our very best to, to get those things under control, if there is a pattern, and we'll increase patrol here, or we'll change some days off, and we'll do those things as necessary to make it as safe as we can. But ultimately, the, the real goal is to get everybody involved, because this thing about not talking to the police, not, not wanting to be a snitch, is, it hurts everybody, it hurts you, just think of it as your family member. I, I just can't understand that process of, I know something bad is pending, or I know somebody did something bad, but I'm not going to say anything, but when it happens to somebody in your family, somebody you love, you want somebody to do something about it. So we all got to get involved, and that's why we all want to get together, with all groups and all people to, to meet with us, and it's just going to take place June the 4th, like I said, we have breakout rooms at the parking lot of Praise Temple, we have breakout rooms inside from 10 AM to 2 PM, and we'll get there and we'll create an avenue of information sharing at that point, because that's, that's what we need, we need, we need people to get involved and to share the information that they have, and not wait until some tragic circumstance takes place and then say, oh, we knew about that. That's just not going to get it anymore.
And I follow that question, and, and you mentioned it, we, we did talk earlier, I want to acknowledge that, and rallies and these visuals, I have no problem with those, but, but at the end of the day, to make it work, and when I say make it work, when you make the city conscious and we work it together to, to either eradicate or to lessen these type of incidences, incidents, we, we need to have a generic source, not need to be you, the police or the community-oriented policing, and that's what I'm asking, even though I, I probably will attend the event tonight, but I'm going to exhort them to come and be a part of something that can actually help, help create ideas and ways that we can, we can address this on a, on a broader basis. But I'm not at all discouraging anybody who wants to have a rally, but, but neighborhood watch groups, community involvement has to, has to be a part of the equation if we're going to make an impact.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we encourage it, and it is actually encouraging that people are saying, let's stop this violence. They're coming together to say enough. We encourage that, and we'll have people at Winfield tonight, some of our community police officers will be in attendance, as they are at, at all community meetings, but we're putting this on, the Community Oriented Policing Bureau and their 12 CLOs have said enough, they want to get involved and do more than what they do now, they want to bring people together. This is, I like to take credit, this was my grandiose idea, it was not, it came from those community liaison officers who are out there in the community every day. They wanted to do it, I applaud them, so let's do it, and let's come together and find an avenue of communication between the public and the police, so we can resolve those things and be proactive, when you know someone has a beef with, with another person, let's get us involved. When you know someone has a beef with another person, let's get us involved. All our people are mediators, we'll get it and get it resolved before it comes and ends with something tragic.
And in regards to the fourth event, would that be people on hand to help them organize Neighborhood Watches and other groups that they want or desire to have?
Absolutely, our entire staff from Community Oriented Policing will be there, available to, if you don't know how to create a Neighborhood Watch, a Neighborhood Association, if you don't know how to create block watches and block parties and things that you get to know your neighbor, we'll help you create that environment. We'll help you create those associations and show you the steps to get it all started. But the most thing that we, the most that we want to get out of it is a level of communication that involves us in these times before things become tragic. And that it's okay to get us involved with that, that we want to prevent any tragedies. And we're not going to prevent all, but we want to prevent some of these things that are going on, some of this senseless stuff that are going on behind it. Somebody looked at me wrong, or somebody owes me $10. Nobody should die for that. And we want to get involved and get in there and mediate those things before they get out of hand.
Thank you, Chief. I may have another question at the end of my communication, at the end of the meeting. So if any other council members have any questions, come ask about it for the Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Awards Communication, distinguished guest, Mayor Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilmembers, audience, we want to extend today our condolences to the family of John Charles Chip Dickey Jr., who's the mayor of Oil City, who was the mayor of Oil City, who died earlier today at his residence following a lengthy illness. Dickey's term of office was set to end this year, December 31st. According to the Office of the Louisiana Secretary of State, he took office there as mayor in January 2005, according to Oil City records. And of course, his father, John Charles Dickey Sr., was mayor there from July 1968 to June 1976. And we just want to extend our heartfelt condolences to that family. Also, we want to, today, to thank Mrs. Bunny Moore and her team for pulling off our very successful, we think, 24th Annual Paint Your Heart Out Shreveport. I want to say thanks to all of the sponsors, including Capital One, A T and T, Frank Management, and some others, but we had many, many of our city employees who volunteered that day, and they made that day a very great event. Want to say that we took pictures of even our C O painting, they gave him a brush that day. We want to say also thank you to Mr. Roy Griggs, President and CEO of Griggs Enterprise McDonald's, for sponsoring a cleanup effort at Hattie Perry Park this past Saturday morning. I'd like to thank Mrs. Arlena Akry and Ms. Donna Curtis from Shreveport Green for coordinating everything for us that day. When we got to the park that morning, I noticed that it was really, really clean in terms of the litter, because our city employees had worked diligently trying to make sure that we could keep that park clean. And so I want to say thank you to all of our city employees. I was glad to see the City of Shreveport's leadership team that took part in the cleanup that day, and of course, Mrs. Angelita Jackson is to be commended for that, because she made sure that she could get those people out there organized with Ms. Akry, and they donated their time that morning, volunteered to help do like flower beds and d-weed kind of things to make sure that the park was beautiful. We want to acknowledge Shreveport's own Strong's Eat Shop for making Spoon University's list for the best diner in every state. Strong was noted for serving up one of the best tasting strawberry pies in the nation, loaded with whipped cream, and for also serving the breakfast food essentials like strawberry waffles with a ton of maple syrup. We hope to have the family here to recognize them at our next meeting, but they did make that top list, and we want to always tout those people from Shreveport that really bring a lot of credibility to what we do here in our city. Shreveport Regional Airport's low-cost carrier, Allegiant, has launched its non-stop service again this year to Orlando Sanford Airport. Allegiant offers low-fare non-stop flights on Mondays and Fridays between Shreveport Regional Airport and Orlando Sanford Airport, now through Monday, August 15th. Ticket pricing starts at $54 one-way and can be purchased by visiting allegiance.com. And so we wanted to make sure that we could remind our citizens that you can take your young peoples over there to Orlando, so that you can have fun on a family vacation. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. Since we met last, the city has supported several events, including Kick the Streets at Lakeside Community Center, Book Club for Children at A.P. Palmer Community Center, David Raines Senior Tea at the Community Center, Sparring Fest at Billberry Park Community Center, the City Medal Play Championships at Corby's Golf Course, Movies and Moon Beings at A.C. Stair Park, Free Fridays Forever in Red River District, Pool Open Houses at Southern Hills and David Raines, and the list goes on. Those are our announcements for today and our recognition, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Like, there's a lot to do, and you've been busy, and as well as some other of your staffing. And to the public and those in the audience, please, there are some instances where you could participate, especially with the Allegiant Air accommodations, so if you see where you can utilize any of those announcements, govern yourselves to doing that, especially utilizing the facilities that are available to you here in Shreveport. We have excellent spa facilities that are, could be utilized through the summer for all type of activities. Just get with the proper people, and they'll be happy to help you. Okay, thank you again. Now...
Chairman.
Yes?
If I could, I'd like to recognize the death of Cleophas Banks.
Please.
When we hear about the CLOs and the communications between the community and the Police Department, some maybe 40 years ago, Cleophas was a part of a community relations group that started the communications between the police and the community at a time when the police officers were not as willing to have that kind of communication with our communities as they do today. He was a pioneer in that area, he worked for the city for more than 30 years. I know that the mayor issued a proclamation, and that the chairman delivered that at one of the services for him this weekend, but I just thought it would be proper for the citizens to know of his commitment to this city and his service to this city over many, many years.
Thompson, thank you for that. I should have remembered to say something, I appreciate that, because Cleophas Banks was indeed a trailblazer and icon in public police relations. He did so many great things, even when, back in 1990, when we started the Queensborough Neighborhood Association, which was a community that was infested with drugs and gangs and violence, and through his department, he was able to help us eradicate graffiti off vacant houses, create police, community, communication, that helped us move forward and made our community stronger, and helped us, again, to really make it a nice and proper place to live again. So I would always remember Cleophas, and I get with you, we may draft something in his honor from the council. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
Chairman, and I just want to echo what Mr. Thompson has said. We did do a proclamation, but we forgot to put it on the announcements, but we do want to send out heartfelt thanks, heartfelt condolences to that family. We too knew that family and knew him to be one of the great civic leaders in our city. And one last thing, I just got another note, I forgot, to extend condolences for the family of Boulder City 5 Engineer George Chambers, that were, that passed away through service. And so we want to try to say something about that family also, and let them know that our prayers are with them.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those expressions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Thompson. Okay, any other communications from any of our council members? If not, we're going to move forward to our reports. Anybody have any property standard concerns? Not, we'll move forward to Mr. Sweeney, our Master Plan Committee report.
This month, we did not have a Master Plan Subcommittee meeting, and only because, as you well know, me and my staff are well into the one-on-one interviews with the elected officials concerning the Unified Development Code.
Yes.
I have done nine interviews and have 10 to go. So we're making progress and hope to wrap those up in the first two weeks of June, and should complete that process and be able to generate a good report that will be of value, I think, to everyone in terms of where we are in progressing with the Unified Development Code. But I would like to say that one of the, one of the things that we're pursuing with the Master Plan Subcommittee Group is trying to reactivate the Community Advisory Group, or CAG, as it's often referred to, which was a group that initially was created to generate support for the Master Plan back in 2010. And we are trying to reach out to that group and try to get more people to volunteer, to pursue an active role in trying to implement all of the goals and objectives of the Master Plan. And I would like to tell you, we made a second effort to reach out. We told everybody we needed a response by June the 3rd, or else we're going to take them off the list. I guess that must have gotten people's attention, because we've gotten about 15 out of the 40 that have said yes, they would be willing to participate, and we still hope between now and June the 3rd that we'll have even more folks that will be willing to participate going forward, which I think will be of value to us if we have an active group to help us make certain that we have accomplished all of the goals that we promised the citizens in terms of the Master Plan, and trying to make certain that those will be implemented.
Good. And let me, thank you, Councilman Flory and I had a chance to visit with you this morning, and I want to thank you for your candor and your openness, and your receptiveness of what we wanted to offer. Trust and I hope that as you move forward with these private interviews with these elected officials, that you again receive good feedback. I was really pleased with the summary that you prepared for us as it relates to the things that really was bothering and concerning early on, that you have somewhat addressed and created a more comfort zone for me and for some other officials to move in a positive way in looking at this document. So, thank you, and I, the Master Plan, our own Councilman, that was Mr. Chair, and he mentions it and keep us abreast of some of the issues that are being proposed in that venue. So it looks like we on our way, and hopefully by fall, we'll be ready to make a positive decision regarding the UDC.
And I appreciate those compliments, and we are, I will tell you, out of those nine interviews, I've gotten some extremely good feedback, that is not only of value toward the UDC, but in building a relationship with all the elected officials and with the M P C itself. It's very important to me that those relationships are valuable and workable, and that are fruitful for our community going forward.
Great. Thank you. Any other members have any questions?
Just briefly, on the Master Plan, you know, I thought after our last meeting, did we set a date for our next meeting?
We were trying to set a date toward the end of May, but again, I kind of go back, I am so booked up, me and Adam are, with the interviews, that I thought it might be better to give everybody a little bit extra time and set a schedule of a time in June. So I'll be sending out an email to the committee, asking them a preferable date for us to meet in June.
Okay, June is fine.
That's my goal.
As long as we do a June meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't, I don't want to go too long, because
Sure.
even if y'all haven't received all the feedback that you're waiting on, we still have some other things we can do.
Absolutely, and that's on our radar, and we certainly won't lose perspective on that.
Right, I'll be looking for that any day now.
Sure.
Mr. Sweeney, thank you very much
Ma'am.
for your service. We have no public hearing today, so we would move to add an item to the agenda.
Adding items?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there are three items that can be added to the agenda today. Resolution 102A, it replaces, if it's added, it would replace Resolution Number 102. Resolution 102 authorized the acceptance of the donation. 102A will ratify the acceptance of the donation of $15,000 from Capital One Bank. The second one is Resolution 108A. Resolution 108 repealed Resolution Number 69 of 2016. This one amends Resolution Number 69 of 2016. And the third one is Resolution 111. It accepts a donation from Willis Knight Healthcare System, and otherwise provides with respect there too. If all three of these are added to the agenda, they will be introduced today, and they will have to lay over until the next meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone here who object to these items being added to the agenda? Is there anyone present today who object to these being added to the agenda? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in support of these being added to the agenda? What do I hear from the council members? Move by Councilman Flory, second by Councilman Bowman, that these items will be added to the agenda. If there are any discussion, please vote. Motion passes 70 to 0. Please continue, Mr. Thompson.
Chairman, there are several items for adoption on the consent agenda. Resolution 104...
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, hold one second. I do have, I do have a couple of, according to the rules, further comments on items on the agenda.
Chairman?
Yes?
I wanted to, so that I can do a recognition, suspend the rules, to do, to take up Resolution 105, since we've got the rally tonight, and I want to make sure that, that some of the folks that are here as a part of this resolution can get back to another side of town and get prepared for that.
Okay, do you move that?
Yes, sir.
A second? Move by Councilwoman Lynch, and second by the Chair, that we will suspend the rules at this time to take up Resolution 105. Are there any discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes 70 to 0, suspend the rules. How do you want to proceed? You want the rules, you want the resolution read?
Yes.
Please, Mr. Clark.
Resolution Number 105 of 2016, a resolution to recognize the iconic career and accomplishments of Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs, and to dedicate the 4100 block of Hollywood Avenue in honor of his extraordinary life, and to otherwise provide with respect there too by Councilwoman Stephanie Lynch. Whereas Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs, a restaurateur, radio personality, business owner, and entrepreneur, and a graduate of Fair Park High School, died Thursday, April 14th, 2016, at the age of 58. Whereas Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs owned the legendary soul food restaurant, Cat Daddy's Old School Cafe, on Broadway Avenue in Shreveport's Moretown neighborhood, where people of all walks of life felt welcome at his restaurant, where he personally greeted customers daily from current and future national, state, and local politicians, pastors, and celebrities, to those who are down on their luck. Whereas Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs was on the airwaves for nearly 20 years, and was known as a king of nighttime radio on K D K S, where he showcased his raspy soulful voice on weekends from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Whereas Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs nightly show featured blues, old-school R and B, and as any listener can attest, Cat Daddy's famous phrase was, "Come on." And he would sign off with, "I love you by the pound." And whereas Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs also owned a used car dealership in the 3600 block of Juela Avenue in Shreveport. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, that the Shreveport City Council recognizes the iconic career and accomplishments of Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs, who is officially known as the mayor of Moretown because of his genuine concern for his community, and he was a friend to all. It further resolved that the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convened, that the mayor on... regular session convene, that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate the 4100 block of Hollywood Avenue in honor of the extraordinary life of Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be executed in duplicate originals, with one original presented to the family of Clarence Cat Daddy Spurs, and the other resolution filed in perpetuity in the office of the Clerk of Council for the City of Shreveport.
Councilwoman? Second. Move by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Bowman, that we adopt this resolution as read. Any discussion?
Yes, let me, first of all, recognize Mrs. Spurs, who's with us today. If you would just stand up and wave, so everybody can see what a beautiful wife and mother. And we also have his cousin. Y'all stand up, introduce yourselves.
For anyone I really know, thank you, Federal Paris Commission, Miss Molly Davis, and this is Cat Daddy's sister-in-law, Mrs. DeWitt Foster.
Good. Thank you.
And I also see my good friend, Mr. Lester Smith, who's also here in support of the family. You know, this was a, and I might really go say that. But later, we're going to do a dedicate this street, and I'm hoping that the mayor and council, and of course, all of Cat Daddy's family and friends and fans, people that, you know, have listened to him over the years, already will be in attendance, and we'll let everyone know when that is. I think tentatively, we're looking at some point in July for doing that. But certainly, on behalf of District F and the Moretown community, I want to thank this entire city and region for the love and the prayers and the support that you all have given to this family. And as I said at the wake, that we want to keep his legacy alive and that we want to continue to support Cat Daddy's Old School Cafe. You know, when I go down Western Avenue and when I go down, what's the name of it, Mylum, and I see, you know, what has happened to historic restaurant institutions that are comprised of fabric of this city, I certainly, we're not going to allow that to happen to that restaurant. And so, I just want to thank everyone again for all that you all have done during this time.
Okay. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the family as well as Cat Daddy's work in this city, not only in this restaurant, or being this jockey, or, but Cat Daddy was more than just those things. He was an advocate. He was concerned about the well-being of people. Always positive, always having great suggestions that may happen. I don't think there was a politician in the last twenty years that did not go by and visit Cat Daddy's Soul Food Cafe. I know, I know one over here that-
(laughing) Right.
But again, Mrs. Spurs, until you go, he was, he was somebody, he was a man among men. His legacy won't go away. I mean, he was an icon, and his legacy will continue to live, and everybody who ever met him, his smile, his, his voice, his whole demeanor, persona, is memorable, and we always remember that. If there's no other, if there's no other conversation, let's vote to adopt this wonderful resolution. The resolution passes seven to zero. Councilwoman, what you present it to, Mr. Lee? Then we'll continue.
just acknowledge Mrs. Spurs. We were there at the funeral service, and did do remarks on behalf of the City of Shreveport-
Yes, ma'am.
-and presented a proclamation and had it framed, and hopefully, you know that we're always going to be thinking about you, and of course, we know that Mr. Spurs' legacy will not die-
Yes, ma'am.
-because he has you, who is very strong, and I know that you have that support of this community. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, ladies, and if you want to excuse yourself, you may. In regards to public comments regarding items on the agenda, let me call Ken Craft. Please come forward. Your name, address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kenneth Craft at 157 Archer Avenue, Shreveport, 7105-
And he wants to speak on resolution 107.
107. Too higher than that wonderful resolution. I was eating Jell-O the other night, lemon Jell-O, listening to Bach, and the numbers and letters started to tumble about what I would say. And Bach is a wonderful musician, and Jell-O would be the three-legged stool of government with the people. J would be the judiciary, E the executive, L, y'all, the legislative, and LO for Jell-O, the little ones, the munchkins. And I love the Wizard of Oz and Frank Baum, and all three elements of government have to have a brain and a heart and courage. And what we're doing in rejecting bids, it's the last chance to stop this dog park from becoming a reality. I've never been for it, although six years ago today, at a meeting of the Citizens Bond Committee, I personally invited a member to appear in front of the committee, ably chaired by Louis Wayne, and nobody came, and so they missed the election, and the people voted in April the next year, and $175 million later, not a dime for the dog park. Fast forward to the fall of '11, several months after the election, and they started wanting the dog park. I pointed out at the time, and I'll point out again, members of the council, Ms. Mayor, that dog parks in other cities have literally come back to bite cities, in Carolina, in Tennessee, and other cities. A dog eventually, call him Toto, if you want, using the Wizard of Oz, and Dorothy trapes us down the yellow brick road and goes to the new dog park, and Toto bites somebody. And nobody knows Toto had rabies, and lawsuits result, and the plaintiff's attorney dresses as a sheepdog, is really a wolfhound, in sheepdog clothing, if you will. And whether they settle in or out of court, some dog parks have closed because of legal judgments. Don't, please don't shoot the messenger. Several years from now, when we finally have a dog park at a much more exorbitant expense, even though roads were atrocious and we need police cars and so many other things, we're going to spend money on a dog park, more than we bargained. And someday, when we lose a judgment in court and may have to shut it down, because it might be a $2 or $3 million judgment if the victim contracted rabies, it's possible. It's happened in other cities. The nature of a dog is the same here as it is anywhere else. Having warned this council over and over thirty-five years, about $2 million for the Pirates, and $750,000 for the CBA team, and the Thrill Hill, and the bio set, I said, so it be, I guess. I did the anagram, and we wasted millions on that. And the convention center is my final thing. You know, we lose $200,000 a month. But the dog park can be stopped, but I'm afraid it'll go forward. You guys are going to add money. It'll get a contract, we'll build it, and Toto will bite, and when we lose in court, just don't blame me, because it's bound to happen. But use part of that brain and part of that heart and some courage-
I got an email.
...and reject the bids and reject it entirely. But of course, it won't.
Your time has expired.
Yes, council?
You know, I got a que, I got an email on this myself. Is there some suggestion out there that we are adding money to the dog par, I mean-
No, no, I'm afraid it'll happen. It's not part of the agenda, but I've seen bids rejected before, and a few months later, the administration, the proponents of whatever it is being rejected, asked you guys for more money.
I guess I just want to take this opportunity to make clear that I don't believe there's been any statement from the administration-
There hasn't been, but I-
...or the council that is-
Mr. Craft, it's not debatable. The councilman is speaking.
Okay.
I just want to make that very clear-
All right, thank you.
-only because I also got an email or two last night, maybe the story was misleading in the news, and I don't know. But I want to make sure that that's clear, that there's not a proposal from any of these governing bodies right now to add money to the dog park.
All right.
Stop that rumor before we get it.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Your time has expired.
And private donations.
Your time has expired.
Okay. By the way, I should add, just to clarify something else, that continues to be some of, this, the City of Shreveport is not paying for the dog park. So, we wouldn't be adding too money, because we haven't contributed any money to it so far. Obviously, it's private donations in the Red River Waterway Commission.
Thank you, sir. That, that, we're going to move forward with, Mr. Mears, you want to speak on 107 also?
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, 71101. I don't know how the Wizard of Oz got in there, but there is one thing I'd like to say as well. I'm afraid that there might have been a whole lot of money that's been involved in this thing, and I'm just hoping that maybe whatever amount of money was involved, if it was really high price, could be possibly lower. Because now Cynthia Keith, she's the head of the Dog Park Alliance, she and the Dog Park Alliance did everything they could to take this thing to court, to win, to get a dog park started. And I just felt like that with the way things were going, I tried to get them to come to a compromise with, at the time that Cedric Glover was mayor. I just said, at the time when I came up, I said, I've heard so much going on, that maybe y'all could find some kind of a compromise to take care of the situation, but it just went back and forth, back and forth. Then, of course, if I remember right, somebody was just whining, you know, that they got tired of all the complaints. The way I look at it, why can't something just be worked out? If the price is just too high, try to find a way to compromise and get the price lowered, that might just resolve the whole thing, and everything would be just fine. That's all I wanted to say.
Sammy, what time is it?
Well, on this one, we've got 404. When we go through the fall, I'll be back on this one.
Okay, thank you. Let me just remind the chamber that this legislation has passed, and until such time that it's rescinded or amended, administration will move at their discretion to, I mean, to administer this legislation. And whatever's happening here today is really a decision by administration to look at other means and other options. Mr. Craigley, you want to speak on 107?
Craig Lee, 1035 Eustace Street. It's not often Ken Craft and I are 100% in agreement, but definitely on item 107, I just wanted to reiterate what he just stated, because there have been proponents pushing this, and I know this is to reject the bids from this overall process. My issue with the dog proponents has been that they have had money, and we went through a whole big battle. I was one of the big opponents of not them having a dog park, but the city putting up about $1 million to construct this dog park, based on the fact that we had other things going on. So, when I saw this issue, I just wanted to be on record that within the framework of what they are working within, that's what they need to work within, unless they're going to raise private funds. And my concern was the same as Ken Craft's. I talked to Shelley Regal last week at Tuesday Morning Breakfast, and we're sitting on an asset at the Louisiana State Fairgrounds, Captain's Field, that has now been taken over by bats. And we don't even have anything to do with it. That should be utilized, but we have made a lot of bad decisions, not this council, but over the past thirty years, a lot of bad decisions have been made as it relates to the, Ken talked about the CBA basketball team, but also the CFL football team and the hockey team. And from that overall standpoint, we need to be, you know, fiscally prudent and focused on those particular things. So, I just wanted to make sure that these bids were rejected and nothing else that the proponents would even attempt to come up with, to try to get the city to be on the hook for more money, would even think about being passed. If they raise it on their own, no problem, but I don't want to see the Shreveport to be on the hook for any additional funds.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and I'm going to repeat that this legislation has been passed. The cost of it was going to be absorbed by the Red River Waterway Commission, which is by requirement, it has to be somewhere near the rim. And the administration will move on this until something to the contrary happens. Thank you. All righty. Mr. Rob Rusar, you want to speak on 52?
Rob Rusar, 451 Sanford, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm here to speak on resolution ordinance number 52. I represent the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association. This is an ordinance that we have been working on for almost a year now. When I became president of the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association, there was maybe ten people coming to our meetings. We now have 300 residents that have joined our organization, and most of our residents have at least two people living, they're a man and a wife, and so that represents almost 550 to 600 citizens. We brought this issue to y'all on several different occasions, and we're all for trying to do what we can to stem the number of Oxford houses or halfway houses in our neighborhood. We accept the responsibility of doing our part with, you know, some houses, but when you put so many of them together in one neighborhood, it takes away from the single-family residence concept of our housing. So, we support this resolution 100%. There's been very few people talk against it at our meetings or by telephoning me. Also, to get off that topic, I spoke to y'all yesterday thanking people who've done some really great things for us. I was remiss by not thanking Ronnie Hammond and SWEPCO, who helped get the new electrical panel at AC Steer Park, which expanded the electrical outlets there, Mayor, and they did a great job of making that happen. Also, I would also request from MPC that if we hear anything going on from Walmart about the idea that Walmart may locate at Yuri Drive, that one of those home shopping stores, that we please be notified immediately so that we can mobilize our citizens. We don't want to end up in the same boat as those people in Bojor. So, thank you for listening to my suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Rusar. Thank the others who gave remarks regarding issues on the agenda today. Mr. Thompson, where are we?
We're on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Number C, we don't need to deal with that one?
Yeah, good. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Under the confirmations and appointments, the mayor has appointed a controller for the City of Shreveport, Mr. David W. Presswell, Jr.
I move, a second. I'm sorry. You whispered in my ear. Move by Councilman Florin, seconded by the Chair for confirmation. Any discussion on the confirmation, Mr. Presswell? If not, please vote for confirmation. Motion passes six to zero, one out of the chamber. You may continue.
We're now under the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have resolution number 105, and the consent agenda has already been adopted. Remaining resolutions are 104, 106, and 10-
Remaining resolutions are 104, 106, and 107. A motion to adopt the consent agenda would be in order.
Move by Councilman Efferson. Second. Second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Bradford, try it again.
Motion passes 6 to 01 out of the chamber. Please continue.
Chairman, we're now under the regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution number 98 amends resolution number 44 of 2016, authorizing the use of certain equipment by North River Business Association.
So move. Move by the chair, second by Councilman Efferson for approval. Any discussion? Please vote.
The craft? Yeah.
Motion passes 6 to 01 out of the chamber.
Resolution 99 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Arshon-
Move by Councilman Efferson, second by-
Uh-huh, second.
Councilman Jenkins, any discussion on this resolution? We'll wait on Councilwoman Lynch's vote since she's in the chamber.
I have to feed the leaders since I'm not talking.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Resolution 100 authorizes the mayor to execute-
Second.
Move by Councilman Efferson, second by Councilman Flurry. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Resolution 101 authorizes the execution of a retained agreement with Cookie, Executive and Galloway.
Move by Councilman Florrie, second by Councilman Efferson for approval. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Chairman, 102A was added, so a res- a motion to remove resolution 102 would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Move by the chair, second by Councilman Efferson for the removal of 102. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Resolution 103 authorizes the mayor to execute a multi-party agreement on behalf of the city to provide bitless steel to manufacturing corporations.
Move by Councilman Florrie, second by Councilman Bowman for adoption. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Uh, resolution 108A was added, so a motion to remove 108 would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Move by the chair, seconded by Councilman Florrie for the removal of this 108 resolution. Any discussion? If not, please vote. That motion passes 7 to 0.
Mr. Chairman, I've been advised by the city attorney that resolution 108A earlier had told you that it was a two-reader. He's advised me that it's a one-reader, and it can be adopted today. It's a resolution to amend resolution number 69 of 2016, ordering and calling a special election in November 2016 to be held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, to authorize renewal and collection of the 1/4th percent sales and use tax therein, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Move by Councilman Efferson, second by Councilman Bowman for the adoption of 108A. Any discussion?
Just have a quick question.
Question?
On the sunset provision, doing away with that, what's the particular thinking on that?
Currently, that, currently that measure has to come up every five years, and it's come up every five years since it was adopted. And there's a belief, instead of putting that on the initiative every five years, that to go ahead and allow it to sunset, as it provides a 1/4th percent sales tax to police and fire salaries, as well as equipment and training.
Okay. See the attorney, does he have something to add?
Do you want to add something, sir?
The C.A.O. covered it now.
Okay.
Took the words out of my mouth.
Are you, are you clear, Councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0. You may continue.
We're now in introduction of resolutions. Resolution 109 authorizes the mayor to make application to the United States Department of Justice for a JAG grant. Resolution 110 selects the Times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport from July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. 102A was added. It's a resolution ratifying the acceptance of a donation of $15,000 from Capital One Bank. And resolution 11, 111 was added, is a resolution accepting a donation from Willis Knight Health System. Those are all of the-
So move for introduction?
Second.
Move by Councilman, um, Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Florrie for introduction. Any discussion on introduction? If not, please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Mr. Chairman, we're now in introduction of ordinances, not to be adopted prior to June the 14th. Ordinance 54 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. That's for the extension of Taxway Inn Downtown Airport. Ordinance 55 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. It concerns sanitary sewer assessment projects. Ordinance 56 amends the 2016 capital improvement budget. It's for Lenwood Avenue Reconstruction Phase 1. Ordinance 57 amends and reenacts section 26109 of the code relative to the fees scheduled by the Department of Engineering and Environmental Services and to enact division 6 of Article 2 of Chapter 78, relative to facility permits and facility servitudes and otherwise provided with respect thereto. And ordinance number 58 is a zoning matter C dash 4 dash 16. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of West 70th Street and Rice Road from R, R A, SBI 2, Residence Agriculture Industrial Park Overlay District to B 3 E, SBI 2, Community Business Extended Use Industrial Park Overlay District. Site plan approval limited to truck sales and service only.
Move for introduction by Councilman Florrie. Second by Councilman Bowman. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Mitch?
Ordinance introduction passes 7 to 0.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under, uh, ordinance is on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 37 amends and reenacts Article 1 of Chapter 14 of the code relative to animals and fowls.
Um, we'll get on the question. Move on the amendment?
I'm sorry.
Amendment?
Uh, the first part of the amendment just corrects a typo in a section. Uh, reference, the second part of the amendment provides an effective date of January the 1st, 2017.
Second on the amendment.
Move by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman, uh, Efferson for the approval of the amendment. Any discussion? Please vote on the amendment. Passes 7 to 0.
I'm happy to move on the ordinance amendment. Second.
Move by Councilman, uh, Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Efferson on the ordinance as amended. That passes 7 to 0 also. You may continue.
7 to 0. Ordinance number 40 authorizes the mayor to lease Americo Real Estate Company certain property located in the city of Shreveport.
Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Congressman, I mean, Councilman, uh-
Okay. Congressman Jenkins. Just so that I'm clear on this one, it says Corbin's district, but it's downtown, right?
There's a conflict of interest.
Okay. Got it. Just understood.
Any other discussion?
That, that reminds me.
We clear?
Very clear now that we mentioned the reason.
Why I'll be abstaining today.
Very clear. I'll submit.
Alrighty.
I was like, I wonder why?
Councilmembers may vote. 6 0, I mean, 6 1 abstaining. You may continue.
Ordinance 41 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget.
Second.
Move by Councilman, uh, Corbin, seconded by Councilman Jenkins for approval. Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 42 amends the 2016 airport enterprise fire protection.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Lynch, seconded by Councilman Efferson for approval. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 43 corrects ordinance number 27 of 2016, declaring the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments Heritage Place Project.
I move.
Second.
Move by the chair, seconded by Councilman Efferson for approval. If any discussion, please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 44 amends a part of ordinance number 40 of 1983 and ordinance 157 of 1975 to change section 1 of these ordinances from two-way stop intersections to four-way stop intersections.
Second.
Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bowman for adoption. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 45 amends and reenacts chapter 26, Article 8, Division 2 of the code relative to disposal of adjudicated property.
Second. Move by Councilman Efferson, seconded by the chair for adoption. Any discussion? Please vote. That passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 47 is a zoning case, case number C dash 20 dash 16. It rezones property located on the east side of North Market, approximately 200 feet north of Lincoln Drive, uh, from R 1 D Urban One Family Residence District to B 3 Community Business District.
So move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Bowman for adoption. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 48 is a zoning matter concerning case number C dash 2016. It rezones property located on the west side of Yuri Drive, 275 feet north of Anniston Avenue, from B 1 SBI 3 Buffer Business Commercial Overlay District to B 1 E SBI 3 Buffer Business Extended Use Commercial Overlay, Commercial Car Overlay District, limited to indoor amusement center.
So move. Second.
Move by, I'm, I'm going to thank to see me Congressman, Congressman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman, uh, Efferson.
I mean, just start using it, just put it in, it'd be a good way to start right now.
Add it to the renact.
Just put it in there so there's no confusion.
Council by, by Councilman or Congressman Jenkins, either way.
Who's seconded the motion?
Councilman.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Please vote. And motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 49 is a zoning matter, case number C dash 23 dash 16. It rezones property located on the southwest corner of King's Highway and Holly Street, approximately 120 feet south of King's Highway, uh, from R 2 Suburban Multi-Family Residence District to B 2 Neighborhood Business District.
So move.
Move by, Councilman Jenkins, uh, Councilman Jenkins and Councilman Bowman, second the motion? Okay, we're good. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance 50 is a zoning matter C dash 24 dash 16. It rezones property located on the west side of Morris Ferry Road, 230 feet south of Southern Loop, from B 2 E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B 2 Neighborhood Business District.
It's your district, you want to?
No, Mr. Chairman, please, uh, if I may, this, for the record, this is Councilman Corbin's, uh, incorrectly showing counsel, the district, he flurried, but this is Corbin.
Second.
Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Efferson.
I was multitasking, not paying attention.
Alright. Anyway, any discussion? Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Florrie. Please vote. Motion passes 7 to 0.
Ordinance number 51 also comes from the MPC, uh, C dash 28 dash 16. It's an ordinance to amend and reenact chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances-
Move by Councilman Efferson.
Relative to site plan approval.
Seconded by Councilman Florrie. Any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Jenkins, thank you.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
Not to be reprimanded there by B, but-
Ordinance 52 is also recommended by the MPC, C dash 29 dash 16, an ordinance to amend and reenact chapter 106 of the code relative to group halls.
So moved.
Second. Move by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Efferson for adoption. Any discussion? If not, please vote. Passes 7 to 0.
Those are all of the matters on the regular agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Alrighty. Are there any legislation that we need to take off the table?
None that I noted, removed from the consent, from the agenda.
I recognize Councilman Efferson.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I did want to just mention, I had mentioned a month or two ago that we were waiting to hear some information, um, from other parts of the state about that first resolution that's been on the table for a while. Finally received that this last week, so, um, we'll expect to, you know, modify this or replace it with something else, but that information's finally been received, so we'll be able to move forward with this in a few weeks.
Fantastic, fantastic. The impatient pays off. Okay. That's the end of our legislation. Are there any appeals we need to address today, Mr. Clerk?
I think all of the appeals were handled yesterday, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from any officers, boards, or committees at this time?
Could I just briefly ask, um, we would, I would like to call another meeting of the Red, uh, Red River District Before Committee, so that we can review the civic corporations' If, uh, if everybody could check their schedules, this is one of those months where we're gonna have a couple of weeks between, uh, meetings. But, uh, you know, I'd be happy to maybe look for that first week of June, maybe the 6th or the 7th, um, which is not a meeting day for us. If it works better to do it on a meeting day, we could do it on the 13th or 14th. Does anyone have a preference?
I do not have a preference, but I think I would, my preference is not having a preference, but-
That's a good answer.
But not having it on a, on a, on a, on a session or committee, I mean, a council meeting day, uh, would be advantageous in a way.
So it'd be better to have it on-
On that odd week.
On an odd week? Great. So, I mean, if, we'll get together, Jackie Nelson, something out to the members just to confirm a date, but we'll, just wanted to see if, which of those weeks worked better. So if it's the, the first week, we'll go with that.
And it don't have to be in the afternoon, it could be whatever.
Correct.
It's convenient for you.
Yeah, great. We'll, we'll put it sometime on those days, and they, that committee that we asked to submit the information gave us a pretty detailed report back, so I think we should have a, I don't think it should draw on a long time. I think it should be a pretty, pretty easily interpretable set of recommendations.
You can forward to the council members and enter them?
Yeah, we sure can. And, and maybe we'll do it along with the request for a, a meeting schedule. That way you'll have a chance to review it yourself.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council members have any reports? Okay. Uh, well, let's get down to the business of the clutch report.
Mr. Chairman, we have one appeal, uh, that will be set for the next council meeting. It's in case number BAC 3416, Union Investment LLC. Their request for packaged beer and wine sales at 7850 Lenwood Avenue.
Okay. And that will be prior to the, I mean, after the administrative conference on the 13th?
It will be at the regular council meeting on the 13th.
Oh, that appeal? Okay, now the, the special meeting was supposed to be on also?
Oh, yes. That will be, uh, after the, uh-
Administrative conference on the 13th?
13.
Okay, good. Now we understand. Okay, Mr. Clerk, anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
Alright, we're down to additional communications, uh, from Councilman, well, from the mayor.
Nothing else from us, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members? Councilwoman Lynch?
Yeah, I, uh, well, it's two things, and I, and I can follow up after the meeting, but I need to, to get an update on my, um, questions about Browning Street. And I got, you know, I got your response as to what was done, and I'm inquiring about, uh, the cost, estimated cost on, on, uh, one, where did it fall on the rating schedule? One of the things I wanted to know. And then the other is if we completely, uh, not just repaired just the areas that they took out for the drainage project- took out for the drainage project, but the entire street, what that cost would be in making it a complete street project.
That was provided to the council office yesterday.
Okay, yesterday? I got it. I haven't seen it.
Thank us.
Is that email?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll check.
Uh, okay. And then, um, and I'll show you these pictures after the meeting, um, on Hollywood Avenue. And they did come out and, uh, and cut the grass, but I need to show you what it looks like. Okay, close, close that, took them a cut. And we didn't talk about it today in the property standards meeting, but, um, I'm not sure if people are still getting the, and I think Mike indicated in our last meeting that they were looking at it, the bulk pickup, whether we were going to continue using this system of citizens calling in, uh, versus something else, maybe a hybrid or going back to how it was before. But for some reason, um, in my district, I, I don't know if they just haven't gotten the memo, and there's a lot of, um, mattresses, TVs, couches, what have you, on various corners that have not been called in. And, I mean, I could spend, you know, a whole week just going around documenting that, but I know that the inspectors are supposed to be doing that and getting it turned in. But it's one thing that, to get it documented and turned in, it's another for it to actually be picked up, if that's what we're, if that's what we're gonna do or how we're gonna handle it. Now, uh, there's a mattress that's been on the corner, and I'm not blaming the city for this, I'm, I'm talking to the folks in the community too, because I don't know who put it out there, but at Evers and Kennedy, that's been there, I know two weeks. And that it's in front of somebody's house is problematic, because I don't know if it came from them and they put it out there, or somebody put it there and they just, you know, hadn't even bothered to call it in to have it picked up. The other, um, thing, and I'm not sure how we handle this, and if you have some insight on it, let me know, when people get their tree limbs cut, should they be paying someone to haul that off as opposed to waiting for the city to do it? Okay? Because, you know, I'm seeing, you know, we're folks, and I'm glad they're trimming their trees, but it just seems to me that if you pay somebody to trim trees, that you ought to pay them to haul it off and not depend on the, on the city to do that. And some of these piles are stained for weeks at a time to where some of them are actually growing into the ground, you know, the debris, and it's making a hump and, you know, becoming a, a grass going around it and that kind of thing. So whatever we're, um, our policy is in regards to that, and we've done a big campaign on make peace with your pipes, which I don't know if it's working or not, but we, you know, there's money been expended, education been expended on that. I think we need some attention in these areas, uh, concerning the bulk pickup and concerning what people should be doing when they pay somebody to cut their tree limbs and just leaving them, you know, leaving it out there, um, you know, for the city to pick up.
Councilman Lynch, I was under the impression at one point, why?
Woman. You said councilman.
Hold on, ma'am.
Congressman, you gotta be politically correct, Congressman.
There's not Congresswoman.
No, they say Congresswoman too.
Anyway, I believe the gender neutral term is just counselor. If you want, if you want to just use the counselor.
Excuse me. I'm under the impression that if somebody is a licensed arborist, they're required to take their, I, you don't have to pay them, if they solicit for business, it has to include the removal of the limbs.
Well, I don't know if they're getting licensed arborists to cut their trees, okay, it might be, you know, pokey.
So then they're illegally, so you're also saying they're also in violation of some others?
I, I'm not really sure. All I know is they're on the street, so, um, so if we need some education around it, let's do that review. But, you know, if, if we are going to pick them up, then, you know, let's stay on top of it.
Can I ask you a question, sir? My, my understanding is that we do have a bulk pickup policy.
We do.
And, uh, and I'm just wondering, Congresswoman, if, if, I mean, we, we want to encourage that, that, that process be, be the process that we use when somebody's gonna, you know, do, do a large eradication of, of cleaning, but my, my issue is if, if I was driving down MLK and I saw a lot of tree limbs, how, how would I know who, who, who did it? Was it the contractor, was it just the homeowner? I'm saying, how would, how would, how would, how would we know? How did you know? That it was a contractor who did, who did that versus the homeowner?
I've seen the people working at their homes, and some of them are elderly, you know, elderly citizens, and they, I know they didn't get out there and do the cutting.
Yes, sir.
Now, I know I've asked this several times, and to the last administration, probably to, to y'all as well, but, um, but if we're gonna stick with this kind of bulk collection thing and people, uh, okay, and I understand y'all aren't going to, I mean, I have a neighbor, it's not a neighbor, it's a guy I know that owns a property at the end of my street that's a rental house that, I mean, this is a guy, he's kind of a friend, violates this thing every week. I mean, you know, every time he's got a tenant move out, he's got mattresses in the yard, he's got couches in the yard, he's got, I mean, this is two doors down from me, and it infuriates me. And, uh, you know, why can't we just write people like that a ticket? I mean, I'd like to charge him two hundred and fifty dollars every time he does that, you know? I'd like to say, look, you don't want to follow the law? Okay, that's fine, you leave your stuff out, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to it, but here's a two hundred and fifty dollar ticket. Why can't we do that?
Let me, let me just try to respond.
And maybe, or maybe it's a twenty-five dollar ticket, maybe it's a something, but, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, it seems like, that seems like a ticketable violation of a, of a policy, and maybe we would get more compliance.
And, and, you know, maybe, perhaps we probably need to fine tune, uh, our, our policy on it, because illegal dumping is one thing, and just people piling stuff on their property is another thing. And of course, we can, of course, go by and cite those people when we know that it's happening, um, but, um, we can take a look at some legislation probably to address that in a, in a more detailed manner. Uh, and I do want to say I agree with, um, Councilwoman Lynch in, in terms of education, and we've tried to do that. Now, the make peace with your pipe, we didn't pay for, I mean, company paid for that, and a lot of that stuff was donated to us, but, you know.
And it's a requirement of the consent decree.
It is.
I like to remind people, that wasn't our.
Right, and we contracted with a company who's paying for that now. But, you know, my thing is, you know, we have a policy that we have tried to educate our publics on for bulk pickup. Uh, we would, uh, encourage our citizens, if they're gonna pay somebody to trim trees with all the large limbs, that, um, you know, ask them to, to, ask the contractor to, to remove those, and if they don't, then let's follow our policy. Once they have placed the, the debris on the sidewalk of wherever they put all those tree, tree limbs, and then call it in, like our policy says, and then we will, we'll go out and get it. But, um, we do need to probably do more education, and we'll, you know, we'll do that. It, it's just that unless somebody tells us, because we have sixty-six thousand approximately residents in this city, we don't always see it as, as a city, but if, if people call it in to us, it will raise our level of concern, and we can send somebody out there and start checking on it. So we, we're trying to do that. We, we have cameras that have been donated, we only have three, because they cost so much, by the city marshal's office, and we're trying to place those in key locations so that we can give those tickets, and the tickets cost a lot when you do illegal dumping. And, and, you know, I'm talking thousands of dollars, and we're gonna start doing that, and we've already been doing some of that, but illegal dumping and somebody just piling, you know, trash in, and, um, you know, big couches and so forth in front of their houses is, is, is a, is a different situation. You want, if it's okay?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Senator Tony?
Yes, sir. One of the things to, Councilman, that I'll evaluate, I think we visited with it earlier this year, um, is the situation where you have an eviction, and it's placed out for a certain period of time. They, I think the intent of that law is to allow the evicted person to try and gather their belongings, oftentimes it doesn't happen. Um, so I'll get with the marshal's office to see how they're handling those situations as well, and I'll revisit, potentially maybe trying to get some legislation that may remedy that issue as well. Now, as far as vegetation, that's completely unrelated, but, but, um.
Well, I just think one of the things that, like, and, and those are great suggestions, I mean, I appreciate that, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, um, but it's, one of the things that's not working right about this is, I don't know how quickly in advance you have to call somebody to cut your limbs, but I'm pretty sure they don't come that day, you know, like.
Call ahead.
But if you're scheduling somebody to come in two weeks to come and cut your, go ahead and call then to get your lit, your bulk pickup scheduled, and get the guy cutting your limbs, you know, the instructions that say bundle these in four-foot bundles, and I won't even have to call it in. I mean, you know, I mean, they're, they could containerize it, you won't have to call anybody, you know, or, but if you don't have, and obviously a lot of people don't have access to containers that would hold all of that, but if they don't, you can call it in when you place the order for your trees to be removed, not after your trees are out. That's why I get so mad at people when they have these, and they're not all evictions, some of them are just people move out and they leave stuff behind, and then they just dump it all on the street corner. Well, you knew that person was moving out thirty days ahead of time, you knew that person was moving out two weeks ahead of time, call it in then. Don't wait till you've put it on the street, because, you know, at that point, that's why I feel like we should be able to ticket them or find them, because the only person who's paying for it is the neighbors, you know? The guy who's making a profit off of written that house out for cheap, he's not losing any money off of it, he's attracting a, a worse tenant, because it's somebody who's willing to live in a junky area, because he's drunken up the area himself, you know, but he's not having to pay a fine for that, the neighbors are paying a fine for it by a decreased property value. And it, it's not acceptable, and the fact that we don't really have a way to penalize them for it, I mean, it's just, we just gotta say it's okay until the neighbors get mad enough that we just go and pick it up, you know? So eventually, we expend the money to pick it up, eventually the neighbors get frustrated enough to call us enough to make us go pick it up, the only person that never pays for it is the person whose fault it is. And so that's what's always frustrated me about it, and it's not, you know, it's not just the way we're doing things now, I mean, this always seems to have been a situation that's been challenging, is that the person guilty of doing wrong is the only one that doesn't have to pay for it. Everyone else suffers. And we've got to figure out a way that we can, you know, make the person who's causing the suffering suffer. I mean, 'cause they're the ones who deserve to pay for it, not everybody else.
Let me, may I just ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Did previous administrations have a better way of doing it, because we're open to, to using whatever the best practice is?
No, I, I am definitely not suggesting that y'all are, you know, not, not giving it right. I mean, it, it has been an ongoing challenge, because the difficulty has been, I think, that sometimes this property is put out, and then it, it is potentially in violation of property standards, but in order to make it a property standards violation, you've got to cite it, write it up, give it the response time, give it the turnaround time, by that point, it's sitting out on the curb for thirty days, so in order to charge them for a violation in the way that we, we know we can, you know, it still has to sit there for thirty days. So again, the neighborhood suffers in order to be able to, to have it as a violation. So that's why I was thinking, now, maybe we can't do a stiffer penalty as an actual property standards violation, but maybe we can have just a typical, you know, like the way you would get fined for, um, littering or something, you know? I mean, it's not as big of a, of a fine, but at least it could be maybe easily enforceable or, you know, something that, um, you know, could at least discourage that type of activity, because driving around Highland and, and Caddo Heights, I mean, you know, a lot of the areas I represent have a lot of rental property, and I see these areas where everybody on that street is taking care of their property nice despite their neighborhood being disparaged here and there and people talking bad about this and that, but everybody in that street will be treating it great except for that one rental property that's just drunken up everything, and it is frustrating, you know? And not all rental owners are bad, I mean, some people do it great, and they change tenants, and nobody knows any difference, you know? But, but for those persistent problems, it feels like we've got to have a better way to, you know, to do it, and, and I know that, yeah, y'all, it's not like y'all are doing it differently and doing it wrong, there just hasn't been an easy solution in the past. I don't think there's an easy solution to maybe, um, to maybe get it perfect, but I think there are some ways that we might be able to look at maybe a smaller fine or something, similar to what you might get fined if you leave your trash can out all week, you know, or if you leave your dumpster out in plain view or something, you know? Like, there's, there's a smaller fine, but at least it's something that we could maybe use as a discouragement.
Our office will explore expanding the definition of perhaps illegal dumping, uh, to include curbside dumping, um, on property, and also where there's no request for bulk collection pickup, so maybe we can try and craft some language for an ordinance to either expand the current ordinance or create a new ordinance that will make it illegal with the fine like you're suggesting to have, uh, some kind of curbside dumping of vegetation. One of the things that I'll try and wrestle with is how to, to kind of pin your person down to make it against the property owner and not making it against tenants, see, that's the issue that we'll wrestle with, but if you'll give me a couple of weeks, I'll try and craft some language that maybe we can present to the council for passing.
Thank you so much, and yeah, I mean, I think it should be the property owner, no matter what, 'cause, I mean, you know, it's, if they have a tenant in their property, it's still their responsibility how that tenant is operating their, that property. And so, you know, if it's, could be tied to the owner, I think that would be more fair.
Senator, um, I mean, again, this is where the diversity of this city comes into play. I mean, what may be happening in this district or in that district, not what may happen in my district. And I want you to be careful when you draft, uh, some, something. Any, any, again, we're dealing with different levels of sophistication and of, uh, economic, economics, and that, the major problem in, in District A, because of the, of the demographics of that, of my district, you know, I got semi-ruled and inner-city, impoverished and, but one of my major issues is illegal dumping. If, if anybody is going to be levied a fine for something like this, it's gonna end up at, at a dead-end street. And, 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 and that's counterproductive, so the, 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 the ordinance or whatever we draft needs to be broad and to be applied, you know, to all districts.
I'll absolutely craft it in such a way.
I mean, my people on the, on MLK is, is begging for cameras, because they, their sites, they monitor one site, they're gonna take it somewhere else. And I mean, again, that's just, that's just the reality of what we're dealing with. And, uh, so we, I understand all the issues that here, but I mean, when you start levying people, fine, they're gonna look at, um, alternative ways that they don't have to pay this, even if they have to put it in the back of their, back, back in the trunk of their car and haul it somewhere where it ain't around their property. But it'd be somewhere. So, anyway, I appreciate the discussion.
This takes some time, so. But this will take some time and some discussion, so.
Okay. All right, Councilman Corbin, you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's not that I don't agree with any of the comments that, that's been made up here today. I do know those of us that were in the previous council and worked with previous administration, you know, this is something that we've struggled with, those of us who've been up here for a while, for, for six years. And, and there are three different problems, you know? We're kind of mixing them up a little bit, but there's property standards violations, there's the illegal dumping, and I think the, the big problem that we can do something about, possibly, is what people choose to put in their front yard for our city crews to pick up. We talked about property standards violations, and you just move it from your yard to the street, and then it's not your problem anymore, it's the city's problem. Through, through running around the city for exercise and driving around for work, there are plenty of constant offenders, you know, the same, many of the same houses, as Councilman Emerson said. And I think what we really need is, and maybe we do this in conjunction with, with upcoming budget work, is coming up with a way to address household goods and, and tree and yard waste that's put out and just expected that we're gonna, that we're gonna pick up. And we do have a diverse city, and each of us represents diverse, there are separate areas of town, and there's diversity between us all, but we can't suggest that it's okay for something to happen in one area and, and not in another area, you know? There's a lot of, of good deed work that happens in. There's a lot of good deed work that happens in some of our poorer areas. But I think a lot of that good deed work sometimes gets put on the street corner for the city crews to pick up. Where in other areas of town, it's a tree company, and they haul it off and take it to the landfill. But I think that we can and should first address what's put out on the street corner, you know, by residents, and have a fine that actually can be enforced and stings a little bit along with, as Councilwoman Lynch has said, a good education program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What am I looking at here? Okay. Council Lady Lynch.
I don't, and I appreciate everything everyone has said, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want... I saw you taking notes, but I don't want you to lose sight of where I started.
Yeah.
Okay? There is a basic level of city services in terms of this whole public waste that the city should be providing. And what that is, if that's picking up everything that's put out there, which, you know, in the '70s, the city probably did that. They probably, if you put it out there, the city picked it up. Well, that was, you know, 30, 40 years ago. Things have changed. City does not have the equipment or the resources or the money or the manpower or what have you to maybe continue what they were doing in the '70s. But whatever that basic level of service is, I think we need to be consistent and together on what we're going to provide to the citizens. And not necessarily for free, because every time you go to the store and pay tax on something, some of that money goes into the city coffers, okay? And so, everybody pays that. So there is a level of service that I think people should expect that the city will provide in terms of our public waste. But we just need to decide what that is. And if it's something above that, if it needs to be fee-associated, I'm not really in favor of punitive approaches to problems, although I recognize that, you know, that should be for exceptions, for extreme cases, not just everyday providing services. We're looking for ways to penalize people as opposed to looking for ways to service our community and to keep it clean and to keep property values up and to keep people wanting to live here. What basic level of services are we going to provide in order to achieve whatever our, whatever our goals are? That's what, that's what I'm focused on. And so, if I'm, you know, I mean, I've only been here a year and a half in terms of disposition, but I've lived where I live most of my life. And I'm saying that what I'm seeing, the call-in approach is not working in District F. I don't know about nowhere else. It's not working. But as I drive around in other areas, I see some of the same thing. And I'm just not sure if that approach of having citizens call in, for whatever reason, it just doesn't seem to be working, it doesn't seem to be effective. And I'm just not for just continuing to do something because somebody came up with it five, six, seven, 10 years ago. We just keep doing it as opposed to really looking at, you know, what's working. And I'm not saying it's not working because of the program. The program may be fine, but the education piece may be what needs to be improved. But it may not be the education piece. It may be that should we be providing this service and should we change the approach? Because I think, and I'm just, and I don't know this, but y'all can confirm it, the people that's been here for a while, part of the reason why it was changed, from what I understand, was we didn't have the equipment. It was tearing up the trucks or what have you. And then I understand we got some particular types of trucks that would allow us to pick this stuff up. But we kept the program in place even though we got the additional equipment. So I don't know. I just don't know if it's time to, and we can talk about it, you know, in the property standards or some other committee, you know, nailing down the particulars. But I just think we need to look at it. And I've heard them say, "We're looking at it," but I haven't heard the other side of it, what the plan is. What are you looking at? What are the options? That's what I'm looking for.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, from an operational standpoint, Councilwoman, the call-in system is not working. The mayor recognizes that and charged Mr. Woods, who's been the director for about five and a half months now, to evaluate that system and to come up with a better plan, because we realize it's not working. The fact that we go to one house and we pick up bulk, and there's bulk two houses down, and sometimes we skip over that because it's not on the schedule, and they've called in, and it takes 60 days for it to pick up, is unacceptable to the mayor. And so, what Mr. Woods and Public Work is transitioning to is a zone approach. And that is every neighborhood, whether it's Hollywood, or it's LRB Road, or it's MLK, or it's Highland, is placed into zones. Supervisors from solid work, solid waste are charged with providing supervision for that zone. And they are to go out and label houses where public or solid waste bulk pickup needs to occur. The trucks will start making zone pickups through those neighborhoods. People can still call, and we encourage them to do that if they have specific items and they know that they're needing to be picked up. But the zone approach, they're actually starting to phase that in now, and it's actually working much better. And it's holding those supervisors accountable too, for them to go out and make sure that they're registering where those are driving their neighborhoods and making sure that they are, they're clean. And that's important to all of us. And so, that is the plan right now, is to go to a kind of a two-pronged approach, is to have that zone approach where we have supervisors that are in the field that are logging where those bulk pickups need to occur. And then if anything else is seen on that street or the next street over anywhere in that zone, they're going to make a clean sweep of that whole area on a regular basis, so there's a consistent pattern in there, and you know when your neighborhood's going to be picked up. And we'll also still take the calls as well. So if somebody wants to arrange some type of pickup to say, "I need something picked up," or "My neighbor's house needs to be picked up," we can still do that as well.
Outstanding.
Give us a little time as that plan transitions, but I think you'll see a noticeable difference in the coming months.
No question.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Councilwoman, complete?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, Councilwoman is complete. Uh, Councilman Fleury?
I withdraw my question.
Councilman Fleury withdraw his inquiry. Councilman Bowman withdraw his inquiry. Before we move to public comments, I have two announcements or two observations. One is regarding these rallies and these other visuals. I'm going to encourage the, and exhort the council members, even if it's not for just being observant, that you go there, that you, when it's possible, to go. I'm seeking, I'm seeking answers. I mean, and answers can come from anywhere to help us address this issue. And then you have opportunity to encourage those in attendance to come to the event on the 4th. We want as many of our citizens to be there. We go to these other events, and that's why I'm leery about going. Sometimes we be there, we can't control it because it's not our event. And then sometime it turns into, you know, let's jump on the city official meeting. So, you know, we have to be careful. But I mean, but at the same time, we want to see, that our citizens see that we out there. Sometime that's, in itself, we get an encouragement that we care and that we want to help them. And in addition, and I do want every council member at the 4th event, if you can be there.
Did we get a time on that? He didn't mention it when he was up here.
I think he said 10 to 2.
We're going to send you something.
Okay.
We need to rally that. We need, you know, Facebook page, however we can get the word out on that. We need to rally that. That could be our response, our broad response to what's happening. Because we're looking for alternatives and solutions and participation there. If we get out, if we get, if we can get the citizens to trust us and to communicate with us and to get to know us, then we'll be halfway there. And also on the, Ms. Regal, it's on the reran opening of Mamie Hicks's second? What am I looking at?
It's in the first, isn't it?
It's the first. Okay, I don't want to be a day late, okay? And I'm excited about that. Thank the administration for moving, you know, on that. And those residents in Cherokee Park is so excited about that. It's beautiful, it's... We're looking for that. And then we go to be celebrating another park reopening soon, I guess, Mayor.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, great things are happening.
Great things are happening. We also want to say that the Oakley Ditch, we're going to be beginning that project in the next, there too?
On the 1st. Wow.
And so, we understand that the citizens out there have been long awaiting for a number of years, something there with all the, you know, things that have been happening out there, but that Sears building.
Yeah, right.
Finally able to get Sears after a year.
To agree to...
To agree. I mean, it took us jumping through some hoops, but we've got a lot of great projects we want to share with the city council members in their different districts.
Overlaying is ongoing, so.
Yes, sir, it is.
Sure is. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, no other comments from the council members. Mr. Benjamin Arnold, is Mr. Benjamin Arnold still here?
I did have one other thing, Mr. ...
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Lady Lynch.
Is he here, Benjamin?
I'm sorry, I thought you were going on, so I cleared the board.
Okay, well, Councilwoman Lynch was...
And Councilman Bowman and Ms. Lynch.
Now, they withdrew their statements. Councilwoman Lynch re-entered her statement. So, Council, Council Lady Lynch?
Yeah, I just wanted to, one, and I think it's been said, one commend the, what I refer to as a grassroots community for stepping up and engaging on this issue of the latest rash of violence in our community. But what I want to be, what I want to be careful about is not having a... And I heard you say, Chairman, that you want, we want the community to trust us, that we want to be of trust with the community. But that's not something that can be staged, okay?
Staged?
Staged. That's not something that can be controlled in the sense that I think would make us sometimes comfortable. Because, you know, a lot of instances, the grassroots are not controllable in that sense. They're very passionate about, about what they believe in, about this issue in particular. And, you know, I don't, I don't feel the need to try to control anybody or to have a staged conversation about something. I want to make sure that it's a, that the trust is based on relationship, that it's actually based on us listening, us reaching out, not being reached to, but actually reaching out and being involved and engaged with the community. And so, as we attend these rallies, and I haven't been to one yet. Tonight will be the first time that I'll be going to one. And I know I saw some clips of some other rallies that council members have been to. But as we go forward, I'm just, you know, hoping that this conversation, as it continues, will be genuine, that it will be to come up with evidence-based best practices that are being done in cities, some that are experiencing what we're dealing with. And I was telling somebody about, I mean, we did this in 2004. When I came on the commission, there was a rash of these type of activities going on. Council, Commissioner Bowman, myself, and Commissioner McCullough at the time marched from Hollywood and Broadway down to Winfield. I don't know if you remember this, Jerry, '04, and had a rally there and, you know, whatever. That was in 2004. It's 2016, and we're back at this point. And so, we can't keep doing, to your point, Chairman, earlier. We can't just keep doing the same thing and expecting different results. And so, I think that, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the folks have to say tonight in terms of what their expectations are, what they're looking for. What is the plan going forward to address these issues from a community standpoint and viewpoint? Because a lot of us live with this every day. I get calls almost every day, mostly from our senior community, who are just deathly afraid to be in houses that they've been in 50 and 60 years, scared to live in their own communities. They call me and won't even give me their name. They won't get, let alone talk about giving the police their name. They don't want to even give their name to me because they fear that they're going to be retaliated against or that, you know, somebody is going to do something to them if, you know, if they say something about a certain situation. And it shouldn't be that way. So I'm concerned about, you know, our seniors because they are, I think, more disproportionately impacted. Although they may, they may not be the ones getting killed or involved in these altercations, but the impact of it is greater, I think, on them than anybody because it makes them more fearful. And they shouldn't have to live like that. So I'm, you know, hoping at some point, and I've got to do a little more research and reading in terms of, you know, this whole thing and how some other cities have dealt with it from a legislative standpoint, from councils and that type thing. And I'm willing to do that and share that information with you all when I finish. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lynch. And let me just respond. When I say control, I in no way implicated that I wanted to control anybody. My reference to control was that two, I went to three rallies. There was one rally where the meeting turned into, "Let's blame the city, let's blame the mayor, let's blame the councilman for everything that's going wrong right now," okay? I couldn't control that climate to say, "Wait a minute, y'all, y'all, that's not the way we ought to be doing this." I went to another rally where it was like, "Let's come together as a community. Councilman, will you come up and speak?" Where I had an opportunity to say, "Listen, y'all, rallies are fine, but after rallies what? We need to hook up to the mothership. And the mothership is the city's police department through our Community Oriented Policing Bureau, okay? We can, we can, we can, we can help engage and encourage and exhort our residents because that's where the change is going to have to occur, with the resources of the city, through our NAT team members, through our Community Oriented Policing Officers. And if they get to know those folk, because they're always available to be a part of any, 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 any community meeting, that's what a trust factor I was talking about. You don't have to trust the police officer that's driving down the street patrolling. You can trust the NAT team members, or you can trust being a part of a neighborhood watch group where those folk are engaged with the police. You can be, you can engage your passers-on-patrol. So there's a lot of different elements that I was saying that they're connected to what is, what we could develop real change agents. And I'm just saying that the big meeting on this 4th, where the police department themselves are providing all the information and resources that they could use to help create neighborhood watch group. They could create opportunities to be a part of the Citizens Police Academy, where they can, they can have people that can show them and help them create neighborhood associations. That's where it's going to, that's where the difference is going to come, okay? And I'm seeing often that we go out and we'll do a rally, and we feel like we done done our due diligence. "Oh, I told them I did my, I did my thing." But that's temporary. We need long-term solutions. And I think what the step that the chief mentioned earlier is one of those resources that has been made available that they can put together and control because they can make sure that the information that's being given there would not be distorted or be intercepted in the wrong way. And that's what I'm saying. That's, the solution is within connecting into the city through the Department of Police, through our... city through the Department of Police, through our resources of how we can expand assisting neighborhoods and not necessarily be in there all the time, but those neighborhood groups could be our eyes and ears, and through them familiar with people who are part of the police department. They could then not call you, they don't have to call me, they can call a pastor, they can call a NAT member, somebody that they say, okay, something's going on over here, there's too much congregating on this corner, there's too much after-hours stuff going over here, you know, have somebody to check that out without being fearful that their confidentiality would be breached. And that's, that's what I'm hoping that we can get to. Are there any other discussion?
Councilman Bowman, you had, you had, y'all.
Okay. All right, Mr. Arnold's not here, but he left some, he left some information, and I trust that you would read it and adhere to it if you, if you can. Mr. Evans, Vadel Evans, please come forward, sir.
Come in, can I, I did, I did want to ask a question. What's the, is that a curfew, what's the curfew law? Is there a curfew law for teens?
For teenagers, yes.
And it's, what's the time limit?
What's the curfew law for teenagers? Phil?
Good.
What's the age?
17.
17.
Up to 17, well, through 17, yeah.
Yeah.
Night, 10 o'clock.
Weeknights, 10 o'clock.
And weekends, midnight, then we'll, we'll find out.
Got to help a whole lot.
Okay. All right, Ms. Evans, good to see you today, and thank you for being patient and waiting. Please state your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Vodel Evans, 1428 Magnolia Ridge, Boja City, 71112.
Okay, please state your inquiry.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I, I guess I have a question for the, for the board members. First, the ones, the first time here, congratulations, everybody else, the honor mayor. I'm a business owner downtown, okay? Before I became a business owner, and I bought this here before on more than one occasion, before I became a business owner, I wrote contracts for General Motors, and my job was to travel the country to interpret what I wrote. Now, I wanted to do something different, so I looked into the city, what can I do? Start a business. I found a property, 204 Texas Street, that was dilapidated 22 years. The walls were falling in, I had architects, engineers, short, long story short, I spent over half a million dollars getting this building where I can operate. Now, according to the, the city's website, books, bylaws, whatever, mission statements, they give you, they loan you money to help you grow your business. Well, the DDA has $100,000 for refurbished historical building, historical district, if you meet certain criteria. Well, I met the criteria. This is my loan application, approved, $100,000. Four months later, changed to $24,000, $24,823 to be exact, and never got a penny. I also applied for a business loan through the Economic Development, $40,000, hire people, all that good stuff. I did that, I met the criteria. This is my loan application, approved, with my payments, never got a penny. There's also a $5,000 facade grant that I applied for, because I know I had to do it outside that building, cost me over $12,000. I did it, took my paperwork to the DDA, yeah, DDA, never got a penny, never got a penny of that $5,000 of the $12,000 receipts that I turned in. Now, I come to work one day, and I see a sign on my door, my building's been repossessed, okay? Now, I've got 20 employees. I, I, I'm currently right across the street, same type thing, I have 26 employees. And actually, your brother works for me, your, Mr. Lynch did my sound.
You're my Dale Lynch?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, we're not related.
Okay, the name sake, yes, ma'am. And I, I, I quit a $120,000 a year job, I took equity from my home, I took my daughter's college fund, I took a second mortgage on my home to do this building, because I bought into the next great city of the South. Well, everything that the city of Shreveport told me to do, I did. Everything that the city of Shreveport promised me that they were going to do, they did not do. And my question is this, if I can put $500,000 into a, a, a building that belonged, that was vacant for 22 years and hired 20 employees, and.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Without objection, without objection.
Don't move.
Thank you.
You have additional time.
And I go, I, I, I worked with SCORE, I worked with the incubators, I worked with consultants, I worked with LSU's Business College, everything in the book they told me to do, I did. I met with mayors after all that, and telling these people and trying to stay in compliance of everything that I'm supposed to do, and pay my employees and do everything, I never received a penny. Now, my question is this, why would I have to pay an attorney $10,000 to get my money? I almost lost my home, I lost my vehicles, I had to move to San Antonio temporarily to be able to find a job that can afford the home that I live in, so I can send my daughter to college, because of course, if you've got kids my age, you get go by the last three years of your financial statements, well, mine didn't fit for student loans. So I had to go find something that's going to allow me to pay for my daughter to go to school. She's done, I've adopted four kids, I have, I, I, I'm in the business, I feel like I've been wronged, and I just feel like something needs to be done. Of course, it was the prior administration, but we are into a new administration. I'm downtown, I'm hiring people, my taxes are current, my mortgage is current, everything's current, why can't I get assistance?
Let me see, can I help you get, answer to your question? And I sympathize with you, but I don't have the answer. I'm asking administration, administration, the attorney could respond?
Right, and he's going to respond, and of course, we'll be glad to work with him.
Ms. Evans, let the attorney come to them.
DDA and all of those people are not the city of Shreveport, I did, I want to clarify that. Downtown development is not the city of Shreveport.
That's correct, too, and I, I do want to make sure, I believe you brought an action against the city that was dismissed on January 11th with prejudice regarding this matter, is that correct?
For specificity, because I was.
Right, the matter was dismissed with prejudice.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to remind the council that that matter has been litigated, and it was dismissed with prejudice, and as the mayor said earlier, the DDA is a separate entity from the city of Shreveport.
All right.
Right here, according to KTBS, Ms. Moore was bullied by Mr. Lester. According to KTBS again, Steve Prater said that.
Evans, in all due respect, is that relevant to what you're asking?
Yes, sir, because there was obviously fraud going on in the department.
No, well, I mean, again, I don't want to get into, into those type allegations. What I want to do.
Those are not allegations, they were arrested, fired, dismissed.
That's passed, I'm trying to, I was trying to ascertain some information.
Yes, sir.
That maybe the council could, could, could respond in a positive way to, to help you. Councilman, I mean, your time expires, so I want, what I want to do is try to see where are we, or do we have any, any, any jurisdiction or preview over your issue? I'm just hearing it, so I don't, I'm, I'm caught off on what was actually you were asking for, in a way. The council, the city attorney responded, the information that we didn't know, which was important to us to know. I'm going to ask Councilman Efferson, who is in real estate, who could maybe bring some light to what's being, being said here.
Well, I was, I'm a little confused as well, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm listening, and I, I think I had, you know, been slightly aware of some applications there a long time ago, although, of course, like, it's been mentioned, the city and DDA are separate entities, and, you know, we're not affiliated with their grant review process or anything like that. But I, I'm kind of confused about what it is you're asking, like, I don't, are you saying that you applied for a, like, a low-interest loan through the DDA's revolving loan fund?
If that's what it's called, I'm not sure what it's called now, but it was $100,000 for refurbishing a historical building in a historical district, and I did it.
So, but that wouldn't be through DDA, that would be through the state. So, did you do that through the DDA or through the state?
I did it through DDA, Frank Williams, I can't think of the other lady, right there in the Capital One building.
That's where they used to be, okay, so what timeframe was this?
I initially started in 2004, by the time I finished everything, I got this notice in 2006 that I was approved after, I'm chasing, chasing, gone, going, and coming. Now, in 2006, I got this notice in October of 2006.
Okay, so all of this would have been long before.
I lost my building in 2007. I found out in 2009 that the city was being run by crooks.
So, all of this would have been long before any of us here were around.
Right, and so when I was able to even think about coming up with $10,000, because I was about to lose my home and I had to move away for three years to send my daughter to college, I came back, and like I said, that was roughly 2012. Now, I got four kids that I adopted that were severely not in good shape, so it took a lot of time for me to get back to you guys.
So, let me, let me, let me bring some quote to this vaccine. So you acknowledge that this, this horseshoe elected people did not engage in what you felt like was appropriate behavior? You acknowledge that?
Not, not this particular horseshoe. Ms. Bowman, Mr. Mr. Shine, Mr. Webb, all those guys told Ms. Moore, I need to find out what's going on to get this money. When I found out who had my property, which was Red River Valley Vehicle, who I was referred to by the city of Shreveport to go there, they took my property, I went and talked to the CEO, Mayor Smith in Arcadia, he referred me back to.
Let me interrupt you one second, let me ask, let me ask the question this way. Administration, from what you understand, and, and do you see any opportunity for us to help this young man?
I mean, we, we'll be glad to talk to him, all this that he's referring to happened several years ago.
Right.
So this is our first time to hear about it.
I'm, I'm sure, actually, I called to make an appointment, but they told me that because it was in the litigation that I just stopped.
In litigation, no, we, we always refer you to the attorney, because I think you had a lawsuit.
And I called, but I never got a call back.
No, I, I don't call you when you sue.
No, I called.
So, so I'm clear, we clear attorney, city attorney, that the city had no liability in what happened to this gentleman?
Court has dismissed that matter.
Okay.
From what I understand, sir, court was dismissed for specificity.
No, but, but I'm saying, but if that was city, if the city had engaged with you in any way and violated you, then, then that wouldn't have happened that way.
Exactly.
But again, I, I want to deal with what happened way before, you know, but I want to, what I'm asking administration, and, and the mayor just said that she would be willing to sit down and speak with you, but at this point, before you speak with the mayor or her staff members, there's nothing at this point right now that we can offer him other than ascertain more information regarding his situation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and, and we'll, we'll need to check with our attorney to see exactly.
What you could engage him with.
Right.
Understand? All right, so, Ms. Evans, let's do this, let's, let me ask that you contact the mayor's office and set up an appointment and see if indeed they can engage you and try to assist you in any way, and, and they will let us know.
About what the attorney.
Yeah.
Let them, let them.
Well, I mean, the mayor would direct him who to meet with, okay? I can't, I can't speak on what I said attorney, the mayor would, the mayor would be the person that you would contact regarding meeting with anybody and her staff.
Yes, sir.
If they, if they determine that there's something that this body can do as relates to legislation, that's what we do, then we'd be willing to consider what we can do to assist you, but we don't have enough information at this time to make any determination on where we go from here.
Yes, sir.
So I invite that you speak with the mayor, and the mayor will give you some directions, and if, if, again, if it's something that we can respond to, then they will let us know, and then we will go from what we know to, to assist in any way.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
And I can probably save them a step, feel free to contact me, and I'll call you back now that there's no litigation.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to use protocol, the mayor.
I can, I can.
Okay, so y'all, y'all got, y'all got an understanding?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for whatever this, whatever inconvenience, whatever.
It was a great inconvenience.
Cost?
Yeah, a great cost as well.
I, I, I'm.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, you, you're very intelligent, you, you, you worked in corporate America, and I don't know what happened.
The Lesters happened.
No, but I mean, but you should have been directed by councilman.
I, I was, they wanted $10,000.
Okay, all right, well, anyway, we, 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 we got a plan, so let's work, let's go through this plan, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. I just wanted to say today that I passed my housing inspection from last Thursday, they came over to do a housing inspection from the Housing Authority, and everything worked out really great, so I'm good to stay for another year at my apartment, which means I'll be able to move on now to do whatever I need to do this summer, such as either June 7th or 14th, I'll be taking a good friend of mine for his Father's Day present out over to the airline and trade hose if things work out and we can get together, me and Don Handley, if we get this worked out, I plan on doing that. And I'll be participating in a summer program at the Christian Life Center at my church, where we have summer kids that come in, and they get to participate in playing games and having basketball, we have like Bible study and small Bible studies, I get to help put drinks in the little fridge, like Gatorade, Kool-Aid burst, and bottled water and cold drinks, and have a good time, we get to feed the kids when it comes to lunchtime. And I also wanted to say that I'm looking forward to giving to the MDA again this year, so if anyone is up to helping me, it would be appreciated very much, because I look forward to giving to them as I have, and this will be 28 years. I wouldn't forget the lady that gave me five bucks one year to go away, so that was the easiest tip that I ever made. And when I, when I got a $5 bill from her and she said, go away, shoot, well, I did, I had to get away from that woman. I didn't even know the woman, I'm glad I don't even know her now. But if y'all are up, or if anyone's up to helping me, again, it would just be appreciated.
I'm sure we, we'll be considerate of your, your, your projects, you always have good projects. But I, I keep hearing you taking people to trade, but I never heard you say you took your councilman to trade.
Are you that desperate?
I have not been to trade hose in quite some time. That is true, we'll have to join each other, we'll have to, the chairman and I, I'll both meet you there.
Well, that reminds me, one time I saw something on Three's Company that was just as funny, because one time Mr. Ober came up and told the kids, I'm going to shampoo your carpet, and Chrissy said, does it have dandruff?
Thank you, Mr. Mears.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've had a productive meeting, I trust, and we completed our business. Any other, didn't it come before the council today? If not, meeting is adjourned.